The Selectmen's Meeting, this date, May 12th, 7:30, all Selectmen present. Just to give the taped Pledge of Allegiance.
Sure.
A pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
That time secret really gets messed up, huh?
Yeah. Hey Gordon.
Yes, sir.
You're on.
I move the approval of the agenda for May 12th, 2020.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move the Selectmen meeting minutes from the regular session of April 28th, 2020.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
I move to affirm the approval of the following warrant and commitments. Vendor warrant number 97 for $119,461.58. Ambulance commitment from April 20th, 2020 to April 26th, 2020 for $27,502.59. Ambulance commitment from April 27th, 2020 to May 3rd, 2020 for $19,774.10.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. I'll move the next one. I move to affirm the approval of the following bills. Michael Gilman Esquire for $770 and Attorney Lawrence Mayo, PC for $2,537.50. Second. They're second. All in favor? Aye. Right. One abstention.
Actually, he didn't have to abstain now when it was one before that, but that's okay. So we'll go back up to one KP Law. So everyone can all in favor of that one.
I can vote on that one?
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Okay, aye.
Okay. Okay. The one above it, KP Law.
KP Law, PC for $2,525.50. Second. All in favor? Aye.
Abstained.
There we go.
Now Pam.
Yes.
Last four paper warrants have not been.
That's okay. The other guys, the other guys can do that. I didn't have those figures when you came in.
Okay.
Okay, so they can do that.
Well, the only one that's in is the mobile home part.
Ah, yeah, because I had, I had that figure. I didn't have the other ones.
Do you want me to do it or is Gordon going to do it?
Okay.
Gordon, you can do them.
Okay. I move to approve the following warrants and commitments. School warrant number 98 for $387,742.2. Payroll warrant number 99 for $354,410.54. Vendor warrant number 101 for $177,617.88. Withholding warrant number 102 for $131,081.1. Mobile home park fee number five for $5,160.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
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 I move to approve payment of the following Selectmen bills dated May 12th, 2020. WB Mason Company, Inc. for $45.44. Relex, Inc., DBA Lexus Nexus for $70. Law books. Cabot Risk Strategies for $2,128. Access liability policy.
Second. All, all in favor? Aye. I'll move the next one. I move that we pay Durinsons and Brooks and Durinsons for $640 for legal service for April. Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. One abstention.
Yep.
Charlie is in your boat.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Which boat?
Sinking one.
Oh, the sinking one, okay. Well, start bailing. Um, road openings Columbia Gas on Fairway Drive. This is for four locations on Fairway at 2050 101 20 Fairway Drive to abandon the stubs at those locations. Highway surveyor has stipulations included in road opening permits and a police detail is needed. We did have two residents contact the Selectmen's Office during the last couple of weeks. This was before, in fact, we had gotten the permits because DigSafe had gone out and marked everything on the roads and folks wanted to know what was about, but they both talked to Pam and Pam went through what was going to be happening there. And as far as I know, Pam, just to confirm, they didn't have any concerns, further concerns.
Nope, they were good.
So what I would recommend is the board move to approve those road opening permits.
Some. Second. All in favor?
This is fun. Aye.
Okay. Advanced Life Support Ambulance Affiliation Agreement with Beth Israel. This is sort of a renewal of the policy that we've had with Beth Israel Deaconess. Copies are back at the office to approve and sign. The agreement has been reviewed by Town Council and Meyer, our insurer. And otherwise, it's ready for the board to sign and approve.
Is that moving?
I'll, I'll move it.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Board has three line item transfers. The first one is for $89.26 from, for fire department part-time wages to fire department clerical wages. Back during holidays in Halifax, a fire chief had the administrative assistant come in to cover the building because, for several hours in case the firefighters who were there had to leave the station and go out on calls. And it's, you know, it's not the normal procedure, but I understand why the fire chief had done it. He said he's going to try to avoid having that happen in the future. Basically, you know, plan ahead to have somebody at the station specifically there for the event. So if the board would approve the $89.26?
So moved?
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Second one is $13,146.98 from group insurance to board of health inspections. This is for Kathy Drang's accrued vacation, which the town needs to pay. She's going to be retiring in June. And when someone retires, the town is obligated at that last paycheck to pay the full amount of whatever vacation accrual still exists. So obviously, it's unfortunate we're leaving, losing Kathy, especially at this time. But, you know, she's worked a number of years for the town, done a wonderful job, and so we need to pay out the vacation accrual.
Yeah, but that job was open-ended when she took it. She's going to leave until we said so.
I think she reports to a different board.
I'll second Tom's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The last one is for $8,200 from gas and oil to communications. We're still transitioning to the new phone system on a building-by-building basis. Because of that, we're still paying bills to Verizon and Eight by Eight. So we have an overage in that account that we needed money to cover for fiscal '20.
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Official town of Halifax Facebook page. Marie Cody has suggested the Selectmen come up with a page. Right now, we have a number of departments, fire, police, order of health, council on aging, recycling, highway, et cetera, that have their own pages right now. I went back, talked to my colleagues. Some Plymouth County committees do have pages, some don't. I think most of them probably still don't. I think most of them just depend on various department pages. I didn't have a chance this afternoon to make copies of the notes I got in from the, my fellow town ministries and managers on the South Shore, but provide that information to the board later this week. My guess would be if the town wanted to do something like that, in terms of a town-wide page, you run through the board's Selectmen, it's going to be up to the board or the board doesn't need a management page and set up the protocols for use. And that's where the advice from my colleagues might be helpful if the town wanted to move forward on that. Right now, given the circumstances, I don't think anybody has the time to do this. And I think right now also it'd be a duplication of effort. At least two of the private Facebook groups do have a larger number of members than I suspect any other medium that we send information out to, including the radio, TV, and newspaper in Halifax. And the residents who don't use Facebook or don't want to belong to the groups, or have been bumped out of the groups, they can always visit the town's website. The town has any subscription service on a number of topics. So for instance, if somebody wants news and notices, they can get that information sent to them. They don't have to go looking for it. And obviously, they can always contact the town hall staff by email or telephone, specific questions. But obviously, it's going to be up to the board as to whether they want to do something with this idea and when it would be done. I'll leave that up to the board. Talk about tonight or.
Charlie.
Yeah.
Just, just on that note alone, you got a plate full. You're about the only one who's going to be doing it.
Right, exactly.
So, so I think we ought to just put that, put that on the back burner.
I think it's a big enough challenge just to keep the town's website up to date. Adding another place for requiring maintenance. I don't know that that's the best idea, especially at the present time. And we can take a look at this later on, once we get out of this mess. But right now, I don't think it's a, it's a priority. I think the website alone can suffice for what we need right now.
Gordon.
If we were going to look to do something right now, we wouldn't allow any commenting. It would just be Charlie would post there. Like if Charlie has the updates for COVID, he would just post there as well as, as what you've been doing. I wouldn't allow any comments if you were going to try to turn one on. But I'd be in favor of having one if you had the time to post there as well. But if you don't have the time, then it doesn't make sense to move forward with that right now.
Well, it's the board's pleasure.
I'd like to look at it later. I don't think now's the time. I mean, you can make an argument for now for updates, but we can do that on our website.
Gordon.
If, if Charlie doesn't have the time to do it, then let's not add something new to his plate.
All right. I'll, I'll make a motion that we don't, we don't take it under consideration and that didn't vote over at this point.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Cranberry Drive sidewalk. Steven Adams, who lives on Cranberry Drive, had asked the board to get a sidewalk installed between the two parts of Cranberry Drive because it's hazardous for residents, you know, including adults and children, to travel along the dirt grassy shoulder of Plymouth Street. And I know the idea's been discussed before. Steve Hayward had gotten a estimate, you know, two or three years ago from the engineering firm that he works with. And I believe the cost was something like $125,000 to do the work properly. I don't.
Just put two crosswalks in?
Pardon?
Just to put two crosswalks in, a hundred grand?
No. So you have the two lobes of Cranberry Drive that intersect with Plymouth Street. And what happens is the sidewalk along Plymouth Street ends at the eastern lobe of Cranberry Drive. If you want to go west, yeah, right. You have to walk along the dirt shoulder there. You know, and somebody just wants to even do a loop, they have to walk along the dirt shoulder. And I know the board talked about this a couple of years ago, because in fact, I mentioned it as a possibility. So I don't know where we want to go. I mean, I, you know, it's too late to put in, well, not technically too late to put an article on town meeting, but we don't have any money for something like this. I can get an update as to the cost from Steve. But right now, we don't have the funds to do something properly. And it's not going to be something simply like, you know, throwing some asphalt on the grass. You need to worry about drainage, you're worried about safety and everything else. And you don't want to put something in there that a year later, then you have to completely tear out or put back in again, do a better job. And I'd be the first person, went after first, because obviously, the folks on the Cranberry Drive would be the first. But I was certainly for it when we came up, talked about this a few years ago. It's just the cost consideration that's the problem.
My recollection is we, we did speak favorably about it and kind of referred it to the highway surveyor. That was at least a couple of years ago, Charlie, is that right? And I think it always came down to budget and trying to squeeze it into a budget. But, yeah, in terms of conceptually, yeah, absolutely, you know. I think we, we were in agreement about it at that time. We were thinking positively about it and hoping to get it done. But everything is dependent on where we're at now, which isn't particularly good.
So it goes on the wish list.
If the board would be okay, I'll check with Steve, see if he can get a better, you know, more up-to-date estimate. So at least I can, you know, inform the resident that, you know, we're looking into it and here's what it would cost. And we'll see if there's money available under a grant program or, you know, as we get through the, into the new town meeting cycle for next spring, spring of '21, if he and other residents on Cranberry want to put an article in to have the town specifically vote the money for the project, they'll have the opportunity to do so.
I move that.
I'll second that then.
Gordon.
Yeah, I, I think if we get the cost, that's, that's one thing. But if it's $125,000, I think the money's better spent someplace else right now.
I think the point is we don't have the money and that's really going to be the issue for a while. But we can certainly investigate it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just on the pilot agreement for the Solar Pharma River Street. I know the council's been communicating with the developer for the solar field. There's no agreement yet. There's an article on the town meeting warrant in case there is an agreement. But, you know, if we reach one by the time we do have town meeting. But just an update for the board, because we had correspondence from council. On the down, Old Dana Road properties, I haven't heard anything from the county or Joan Pierce really for the last two weeks. Obviously, we talked about it at the last meeting. I'll check in with Frank Basler again, because we'd like to get the deed work completed. I mean, the deed is written and everything is ready to go. We have the money available. At this point, it's just getting a confirmation from the county as to when and where they want to get the deed signed and then transfer the money over to them.
They did, in fact, record some, some plans. There were several plans recorded showing the outlines there, but we didn't get any accompanying documentation. So we really didn't know what they were doing.
Okay. For Upton Street, it's one of the lots the town owns that has a abandoned house on it. We had that through the fore, one of the foreclosures. Maya has, because it's not, I'll put it, part of the town's operations, Maya classifies that sort of as a special property. And because it has a building on it, it was just landed, it would be different. But in essence, it's sort of the building is in a, the equivalent of an attractive nuisance and a liability sink for them. So what we have is a separate policy for, for Upton Street that is about $2,500 for insurance that covers both, you know, the property, but then also the general liability, whether it's trip and fall or any other type of liability for that property. The reason I'm bringing that up is, you know, we've talked about this before, about trying to look at the options for the town to sell the properties that we do have one way or the other. And given the cost, it makes sense to try and do something, because all swires, we're going to be paying, let's say, $2,500 every year for it. The boards looked at a few possibilities. One is to just sell the property as is, in that it would not be a buildable lot by itself. So probably the only people who would be interested would be in the Butters. If the only, if only one of Butter was interested, we'd end up with a very low buying price, which would nowhere near cover the amount of back taxes due or even very possibly the insurance. And, you know, if we put a minimum on there, there's no point in the sense of, let's say, we put the minimum at $1,000 and someone says, "I don't want to spend $1,000," and we're still on the hook for the $2,500 every year. The other possibility would be to work with the planning board and get a new bylaw, in the zoning bylaw, to allow the abandoned properties to be used via special permit by the ZBA for single-family only. And we've talked about that process. That would increase the value of the property. We'd hopefully get a better price for it and maybe at least cover some of the, or all the property, you know, previous property taxes that weren't paid on the property. I didn't know what the board wanted to do, but I did want to make sure the board was aware that we're spending material money now on that property.
Did you say, Charlie, that it isn't just liability? There's coverage on the building, which is valuable.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, we have Lloyds of London covering the building and then there's another insurance company covering the actual liability. If someone tripped and fell on there or, you know, they got into a nuisance situation.
Right.
Where they, you know, for some reason, the very existence of the property and somebody on it caused the liability for the town.
My, my point was that the building has no value per se. I don't know, there wouldn't be any loss to the building. I mean, the liability is the only.
Yeah. Well, it's valuable, even though, even though it's not valuable by, in a sense, I understand what you're saying. There's still, even on the tax records, we would have it as a valuation of something. And that's why we have to pay property insurance on it.
Yeah, but we don't have it mortgage, so, you know, we, in terms of the structure itself, which is probably not even much of a value. But depending on what we're paying Lloyds of London for it, I don't know that we actually need to have the building insured. The liability, absolutely, not a question there, but just something to look at.
Yeah. What would it cost us to raise the building?
I don't know.
It's not, not a huge building, but, you know, anywhere from five to 12 grand, 15 maybe. It depends. It's a hard site to work.
Is there a public access beach on Ocean that's close to there? I was trying to bring, the website, town website's still down, but I was trying to bring up the assessors card to see how close it was to that.
I don't know. I mean.
There's several on the other side of the street.
So if we raised, if we raised the building, could we have a little spot for people to park? They wanted to use the beach?
Again, there's liability now, you know. I mean, we could do that, but.
I mean, I'm not quite sure why we would want to, to be, anything that was there that was available to town residents is basically a stub. I mean, we're talking, those lots are what, 50 by 100? So we're talking 50 feet, let's say, of beach area.
Most of them are only 2,400 square feet. A lot of them.
24, so even less than that, probably.
Yeah.
I, I would be in favor of raising the building if it's going to save us money if we're, if we're not going to sell the property.
That's my thought.
Well, if we can't sell the building, absolutely. You know, we can't sell the property to, for any value. Even the liability end of it is, is reduced by the fact the quote-unquote attractive nuisance element has been reduced.
Well, I guess.
Can we get some bids?
Yeah, I, if the board wants to, you know, go ahead and do something like that, then am I going to the Finance Committee for a reserve fund transfer at some point?
Well, maybe we should just get some bids first and see what we're dealing with.
I think the bid could come first, then we'll know exactly what's going on, so we'll know what to go for.
I can do it that way, that's fine.
Gordon.
Uh, second your motion, I guess? Or Tom, whoever made that?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, for a moment, I want to get through the other parts of this before we get back to COVID leave, if that would be okay with the board.
Sure.
Okay. Just on the banner project, Colleen Burgess, maybe, this is for the honoring Silver Lake graduate. She's maybe working with Harding Printing to, Steve, about printing the banners. I haven't heard anything from her probably about, I think, a week and a half. I'll touch base with her and see if anything's been developing there. Town meeting, which is still scheduled for June 15th. The warrant's going to go to press, I'm hoping, on Thursday. I've added a bylaw change so that the board would send out a postcard to all households notifying them of town meetings and where the copies of the warrants are available. And as much as the June 15th dates, the planned date will need to go over to, to hurdles before that date to hold the meeting. One is the finances. If the state budget, if we don't have a certainty of some sort of what the state aid's going to be, I don't think it'd be fruitful for the town to hold a town meeting. Because much, or much of what we're trying to do in terms of the final decisions on the budget is dependent on the state aid numbers. And the second is on the physical logistics, I'm working with the town moderator and town clerk and the school system and looking at the two possible locations over, obviously at the elementary school, but also at the high school, at the auditorium. I'm seeing what we would need to have for physical infrastructure to ensure social distancing and such, and what the capacity of those rooms would be. You know, you might have it in the gym, we might have it in the multipurpose room, could even have it in both. Though that then raises the bar on having sufficient communication between the two rooms and such. We're still a month away from this, obviously. And, you know, I will get some time spent during the second half of the month to see what's possible for either of those locations. But what, Gordon, you had mentioned to me earlier today that you had heard that was likely that the state budget was not going to be determined before the end of June?
I, I was told that on their remote session that they had, they authorized themselves to have until June 30th to present a budget.
So.
Right, sorry. We're not going to have any real clarity by June 15th. Kingston apparently is looking to move forward with having town meeting, but I don't understand what they're going to do if they don't have any clarity. And I heard the same for Clinton as well, while I was on the Silver Lake call tonight.
Okay. You know, in the sense of they're thinking of having the meeting in Clinton?
They're talking about having it.
Okay. Okay. I'll check again. On the town election that is happening, it will be June 20th, unless this legislature does something different. But we're, the assumption with the clerk's office is that that's going to happen. She's been busy obtaining supplies for the workers and for doing the infrastructure. We do, you know, she's working with the school about the physical logistics. I suspect we should have a Zoom meeting at some point with the clerk and with the school and anybody else who's involved in making the election work sometime soon. And in-person voting will occur. We're going to obviously encourage mail-in voting, but everybody's going to have that option. They can come in person if they want to, they can mail in if they want to. I mean, a little bit later this month, we'll start the publicity for the mail-in balloting and how people can do that. Just going back on the budget for a minute, it does remain in flux. Of course, the Finance Committee will have recommendations and articles by Thursday. And so we'll go to press with that. And there is a comment in the warrant that everything is subject to change, obviously, due to the COVID situation. As far as the CARES Act is concerned, I've heard nothing from Plymouth County. And I need to do more research about the eligibility and maybe be able to get that done later this week. Of course, there's no application form to send in at this point, but it'd be good to be prepared and talk to various departments about what their needs are, specifically in relation to COVID and what they'll need between now and the end of December, but also thinking ahead that we may, we're going to be under this situation for months into '21 and what supplies and equipment we'll need to cope to, while this crisis continues. And given the amount of money that should be available, we should be, you know, thinking along those lines. It should be just, you know, for the next few months, but for the next year and a half at least. Memorial Day, all the members of the committee recommended the town not hold its normal observances and ceremonies. I'll get confirmation from the VFW about when they're planning to put the flags in on the town hall green. I know there was an indication, I think at one point, they were thinking of trying to do some very low-key ceremonies involving social distancing. If they are planning on that, I'll make sure the board's aware of it. It won't be a situation everybody can crowd together. We're all have to keep, you know, the six feet away, but if they're doing something, at least, you know, people should be aware of it. But we don't want it a situation that Memorial Day turns into a place where we end up transmitting COVID to one another. On the FEMA map, I, the board had sent the letter to FEMA asking for rescission of the updated flip plate maps because of the deadline of having bylaw enacted by July 22nd. I'm waiting to hear back on that. However, our legislator neighbor, Josh Cutler, had sent, put in legislation that would allow, if the planning board held its zoning bylaw hearing, which would include the proposal that the board select made on. The proposal that the board select made on the update for the maps, but then the selectmen could by itself vote to enact that particular bylaw. It wouldn't be done for all zoning bylaws, it'd be very specific to this one subject, so that it would be another option for the town to be able to be in compliance with FEMA. I didn't know if the board had any interest in sending a letter to Representative Cutler and then our legislative delegation in support. Doesn't mean that we have to do it, it just would provide that other option for the town.
I think it's a good idea, the letter.
Yeah, I, I agree with you Troy, I think it's a good idea. And I think the FEMA, the whole FEMA thing is really confusing and complicated. It's not really the best place, a town meeting where most people haven't any real grasp of what's going on with the FEMA maps. And in this particular instance, I think it's a good idea, it expedites it and gets us in compliance. Or could at least give us the option.
What, what happens if we don't have it in place by July 1?
So July 22nd is the, the deadline that FEMA has for enactment of a bylaw that would include the update of the maps. The board has already sent a letter to FEMA asking for rescission of those maps, in essence, saying that by rescinding those maps. The July 22nd deadline no longer applies because there are no maps that we have to bring up to date. So that's, that's the option right now we're using in case nothing else works. But this does, you know, we still always have the, if we have town meeting before July 22nd, as long as the, the planning board holds its zoning bylaw hearing, then. You know, we can vote at town meeting as long as it's before July 22nd. This would provide another option besides rescinding or a voted town meeting. It would, if we're not going to have a meeting by July 22nd, it would allow the planning board to hold this public hearing. For the selectmen then to vote to approve the changes in the maps.
Okay.
So, okay.
I, I, I think we ought to send the letter off, did, did Tommy want to second that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, yeah.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
The beach stickers for non-residents has had come up back during the winter. Caroline Ford, however, had followed up with me during the last couple of weeks. She inquired about, again, I did write to her that I had checked with Kingston and Duxbury's websites. They are right now not issuing beach stickers to anybody, at least according to websites, because of COVID. I thought it was unlikely if they're in the non-beach sticker situation right now that Halifax probably is going to. Not be there either, but I would bring this matter back to the board to see what the board felt, whether we're just going to postpone. Discussion on this for a while longer to see how everything resolves as far as COVID and, for instance, having social distancing at even the beach over on Lingan Street.
If we're not going to open the beaches, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to do anything, but I, I would be in favor of a, I thought we said like a $25 sticker fee to use the beach for non-residents.
Right, I think that's what the board's direction was, yeah, you're right, Gordon.
Yeah, enforcing that, the chief shoves, how do you feel about that?
Let me get him unmuted. Chief, let's see, come on, yeah, I think he's kept himself mute, there he is.
No, I'm sorry, um, yeah, so I had called both Kingston, Duxbury. And I know Duxbury's fees were really high, I think. The 25, 30, you know, that range should be fine for Halifax. Again, we'll have to figure out the logistics of where they can get the beach stickers and who collects the fees and all that. But I think it definitely would alleviate some of the problems. I know last year we didn't have many, much of a problem, I know Al's did a lot of good work on there enforcing the town resident only. And I know he did have to throw some people out of there, but I know we did, we see some complaints from some of the residents about non-residents using the beach. So maybe that's a way to kind of minimize that issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you want, do you, you need us to set a date, I mean, the amount right now, Charlie?
No, I, I guess there's two questions, whether you want to do this at all. If you do, then we would need a dollar amount attached to it. Or do you want to postpone this to see whether a month from now or two months from now, whenever, that we're ready to begin operations at the beach and then make a decision at that point?
Yeah, it's a new point at this point, if we're going to have the beaches closed. But I think we should have something on the books that we decide to go forward with allowing non-residents once they bought a sticker.
Okay, so someone can make a motion to approve having non-resident beach stickers or whatever, you know, I don't know if there's stickers or whatever we're going to do. And then at a price, but to delay issuance of those stickers until the town is ready to reopen the beach.
When we had.
And they're non-trans, and they're non-transferable.
When, when we had that discussion, were we talking, I mean, it was prompted by a resident of an abutting town. Who had some of their property in Halifax and some, most of their property, I think it was Hanson, if I'm.
Right.
Were we talking about just abutting towns or were we talking about opening up to everybody? I don't recall, I am trying to remember.
Oh, we, we had, we had a non-resident taxpayer who asked, and we just had another person who was a non-resident but not a taxpayer. So, I mean, it's up to the board as to what restrictions you'd want. If you want to say to only non-resident taxpayers, that's a possibility. If you want to say to all, any non-resident, but they have to be in a budding town, that's a possibility too.
I, I, I'm thinking where the, where the beaches are closed now and appear that they're going to be for the foreseeable future. I maybe put this off, at least for another meeting or so, and I'd like to put a little more thought into it, but that's just me.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, I'll, I'll carry it over. I'm speaking of my pots and pot beaches, water levels had gotten fairly high back in April. DP worked later into April now into May to work with the city of Brockton to get the lower, the water lowered back to where it was at the beginning of April. They're trying to be a little more proactive about dealing with rainstorms coming in and raising the levels, but ends up causing beach erosion and such. There's no action to take, I just want you to be aware that PEP is following up on that and working with the city.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Is, is that, that they're pulling more water from Monponton or they're opening the dam to more water?
They, they had opened the dam as much as they could, but, and still having high water levels, so for a number of days, they diverted water over to Monponton.
Okay.
Recycling center, the soft opening is still on schedule for Wednesday, May 20th. I'll check in with Steve and Susan, either the end of this week or the beginning of next week, and make sure everything's ready to go and that they'll be open that day. If something changes, I'll let the board know. Bannon vehicles in 92 Lingan Street, I'm working with Attorney Mayo, I mean, he's going to be running the property owner 94 to hope that. He has a better chance than I do of getting something done in terms of the property or the next door neighbor moving the vehicle. Because at least according to the registrations we have, at least up until the car was still registered, the truck was still registered, it was owned by somebody there. But I do recommend on the boat that the board declare the boat to be surplus property and sell that in the trailer that the boat is on, which has flat tires. Not the boat, the trailer, by bid, high bid wins, and we just sell it as is with no claims to it whatsoever. We're not going to say it even floats, but if somebody wants the whole thing for scrap for some reason, or they think there's a chance they can try and take that boat and. Make good use of it for whatever reason, hey, if they want to take it for a dollar, I'll happily to get it out of there.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Charlie, what are our options if for some reason we don't get the truck moved?
Um, the options are we can get the truck moved ourselves. I talked to Attorney Mayo about that, we're legally in the right to get the truck off the property. Either as an abandoned piece of property or at the very least, since we own the property, that we have the right to control it and get rid of it.
Charlie? I went, I drove by there today and the truck is no longer there. The only thing that's there is the boat, so I don't know what happened to the truck, but it disappeared. So that's one thing to say.
One here they got.
Yeah.
Chief?
Yes.
Are you looking for a boat? We could add that to your contract, maybe.
Well, it's just I'm the harbor master, I could, you know, I would be able, I would need a boat to, you know, patrol the harbor, that'd be, I mean, the lake, so that'd be perfect, I think. I think it's seaworthy, and I know the trailer needs a little bit of work, but the boat itself might be seaworthy. But yeah, Charlie, the, the truck was gone, I went by there on, and I was going to Lake Street, probably around 2:30, and the truck's no longer there.
Hey, one thing off my list, that's wonderful news.
Yeah.
Um, another abandoned vehicle, this is Richard Harrison's there, the truck by the red farmhouse, just nothing from him. So the first fine letter, which will be for 10 days, violation per day, I think it ends up being $200, 10 days at $20, we'll send it out and hope something happens.
Charlie, that's actually the second letter, right? You, I.
Yeah. Yeah, we went through this and he actually paid the fines.
Right.
Date, and, you know, he said, okay, fine, well then now get rid of the truck, you're spending money on it. And then he just has fallen off the face of the earth again and.
There must be some really big sentimental reasons for him keeping that truck there, because that's, that's ridiculous.
Um, I did not get out to Butterwood on the trash complaints, I'll get that out there tomorrow. Chapter 42 on Country Club Estates, the ZBA held, it's a meeting on last Wednesday, they didn't actually start the hearing. The hearing's going to be postponed until June, I know it's another Wednesday, I'm going to have to look it up, but I'll tell the board. I had spoken about that bylaw for distribution of the warrants, the text is there in my notes. So you have the old, the current section right now, and actually what's interesting is right now, under the town's bylaw, there's actually, there's no stipulation. That the special, if we had a special that we would send out the warrant to everybody, we do it, and that's our practice. But there's actually nothing in the bylaw that says we have to send out the special, it has to be posted, but not sent out. This way on the distribution of the war, the new language, whenever we're going to have a meeting, whether it's a, or the special, we'll have a notification. You know, Gordon's concept of the postcards is probably what we'll do, and get the postcard out, the postcard will have information about the place and time of the meeting. And then also where people can get copies of the warrant and also tell them that they can get copies via the town website. Still going to take an act of the town meeting to approve this, and that's why the warrant's going to be sent out in the next few weeks after we get it printed for the June 15th date. Um, I did, I'm going to be adding COVID articles to the warrant, not about anything, but more general. In case we get to a point, you know, we reach a point, whenever we do have to tell me, we've spent money under the emergency declaration. At some point, we've actually got to technically appropriate that money, we've got to find a source to pay for that. I don't think our costs have been huge, but legally, at some point, whether it's through the recap sheet, and when we set the tax rate or through an appropriation town meeting, we're going to need to appropriate the money. And then the other question will be whether we want to have a separate fund from, separate from all the other possibilities, whether it's a FEMA reimbursement or Plymouth County money or anything else. If we have COVID costs that are not specific, you know, for instance, to any particular department. Innocent abatement, we have one that came in after the warrant, after the agenda got posted, that's for $85,265.81.
So moved?
All right.
All in favor?
All right.
Um, on building, the building needs committee, this got buried back in the middle of March when we were starting to deal with COVID. But there was a note that we wanted to have the board appoint Rob and Steve Hayward to the building needs committee. I know they haven't met and they probably, everybody's got other things, but once they can start meeting again at some point, we'd like to have those two people on the committee.
I'm with that.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
And I included a note about my vacation, obviously, the board, which I appreciate allowing me to carry over a substantial malvocation to fiscal 21. That's still going to leave a number of days I need to use. I'll keep the board informed about when I'm going to be not working, and that's, it's not a situation, I'm going to come home and work. I'm not going to be working on those days, I promise you, there's enough other stuff for me to be doing at home that's non-work related.
Maybe Sue can get you a ride in the COA to the beach she's at.
I'll get my board.
Sue needs sunglasses with all that sun.
And sunblock, yeah.
Um, back to the COVID leave, um. There, I, I, with the governor and the state government, obviously proposing some, you know, slow opening series of steps. With the recycling center opening next Wednesday. We're starting to look, you know, by various departments and buildings at what we'll need to have in place to be able to reopen. I know Gene Galat's done some excellent work on putting together a plan for the library. I, I, it's, I think what I want to do is to get it actually sent out to the other departments along with the information from the governor about what. Whether it's a business, whether it's a government, whatever, that we're going to be reopening, to say to departments, these are the things you need to be thinking about. About reopening, you know, whether it's a building by building basis or a department by department basis. In that, we're looking at the physical infrastructure, we're looking at personal protection equipment, we're looking at policies and procedures. Because you're going to be interacting with residents, or you know. And to, you know, at least have them start thinking, just like Gene did, to get to a point that when we want to be reopened, we're going to be able to. We won't, as far as I can see, be able to be reopening the town hall next week. The reason, one of the reasons being that we're not going to have all the physical equipment that we want in place. We were getting Plexiglas shields, I know that Scott Matur has been working hard on that and a couple of other things. Those won't be, I don't even know if we're going to have them available, you know, that they're going to arrive, let alone be installed. And my pri, my first priority in all this is the protection of the employees who are working in these buildings and also the protection of the residents and the visitors who come in. I think it's, I don't, I want to say difficult situation, I think it's going to be a challenging situation. Because I think, you know, it's never, it's not going to be normal for a long time, one way or the other. But I think what we, we should be trying to do is get back to something that looks a little normal, as opposed to just having the buildings closed. And I think we may be thinking long-term about how we're providing services and such, and, you know, there are some articles in the town meeting warrant to reflect on that. But at the same time, I think having the in-person connection with, between town officials and town employees and residents and anybody else who's interested. In town services is important, electronic communication's great and such, but I think the in-person makes a big difference on how. The relationship works between the, us who are providing services to everybody else and those, that everybody else. I didn't know what, if the board had given any thought about what they were looking for from departments and for town, you know, for building wide. And whether, and if they were thinking, let's aim for a particular date or wait, you know, aim for a particular set of circumstances before we think about opening. But like I said, I don't think we're ready, certainly at town hall, to open up for next week.
I, I, I think we should start with having our, getting squared away with which employees are coming back. Make a determination as to who has the ability to come back. I don't think there's too many people with young children at home, if I'm not mistaken, so I don't think that's a big issue. But maybe we should at least start functioning with our staff first before we start thinking about opening the doors to the public. Just to kind of get all our protocols in place.
Well, I think that, first of all. Well, I think that, first of all, we need to check what the department has because every every department is unique in its own self. As to who what can cannot work from home, who can work from and get the job done.
Right, I mean, and we're we're going to have some employees that I wouldn't want to have the responsibility of having them come in. There are employees who have. Difficult health issues that, you know, it's contrainted indicate in to indicated for them to come in. In this type of situation, this type of environment tomorrow, next week, next month, even next year necessarily, if we haven't, for instance. Found a vaccine or something like that. Um, I don't, and again, you know, as I said, the first priority is the safety of the employees and the public. Um, but I think, you know, we've been working the last couple of months. In many cases, it depends on the department. Um, but being able to work from home is, you know, has worked in many cases very well and that. We may have certain employees who can perform their work, who can't come in, but can still perform their work from home. And I think, as you point all pointed out, thinking about that on a department by department basis is important.
Corey? I think we should have a discussion with the department heads and see what precautions they want to put in place for themselves and the department and their employees. And come up with a list of requirements for each department and if there's any specialty items that we need to get. I know that there's like possibilities of setting up a camera and external. The the other day when we had our selectmen's meeting in the great hall. And I could have brought in an external camera and external microphone. It would have been better for the people that were watching on Zoom. So I can try to do that if we have another one in the. Great hall, but there's stuff like that that we we could purchase as a town. So that it could be set up for the zoning board or the planning board when they have their hearings. That if somebody wants to come to town hall and and interact, then it would be available to them and it would be available to the board members and the rest of the public.
So if it's okay with the board, I'm gonna, I'd like to be able to send out the work that Gene Galat did along with the information we read. You know, the last couple of days we've got in from the state to start the discussion and then maybe depending on the board's schedule, get a meeting set up. What, obviously partially, at least via Zoom, um maybe daytime meeting where the department heads are more available. To have that discussion you described.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor? Alright.
So I think I've gone through everything.
Charlie, hi, it's Gene Galat. I have my hand raised. Can I just say?
Oh, yeah.
Um, so. I have, I was um in a another Zoom meeting today with all the directors at the sales library and we're kind of all set to do. To start doing curbside pickup at some point next week. So I was thinking Wednesday, I don't, just to do curbside. Pick up because and to accept returns in the book drop and I'm following all kind of this procedures. Um, I was talking to Scott today. He's gonna help me with that. So um the curbside pickup would be contactless. Um, so I don't know if I needed the selectman approval for that. Um, I'm gonna ask Kathy Drynan. She already looked at my plan. She liked it, but. Kind of get maybe formal approval for her, but I'm thinking maybe Wednesday I'll be ready to go with um some contactless. Curbside pickup if it's okay with the board.
That's awesome.
Yeah, very good.
Okay, great.
Love your initiatives.
Look, you know, if if people, you know, if you can do curbside uh food delivery, I mean, that's how I picked up my bagels on Monday. I mean, I'm sure we can, should be able to do it fire for books.
Yeah.
Are they kosher?
Yes, sir. Um, Gene, anything else?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, well, thank.
Um, I think like to, oh, that phase two was actually opening the building to patrons and when I'll talk more about that when we have that department head meeting. Cause there's gonna be a lot of stuff that I need actually in the building as far as, you know, supplies and. And I know they're hard to get a hold of, but that I'm I'm planning on phase one, you know, until further notice, you know, until we can, as a town. Can open up departments and allow people into the building safely.
Great.
But for now, I'm just gonna concentrate on the curbside pickup.
If there's anything else the board wants to talk about, that'd be great. I did set up the board for a separate meeting. Um, so at the end of this, the board could vote to go into executive session to the discussing unit contracts with the court cases. We don't need to go into. Um, executive session on, but the contract negotiations would be with the firefighter sergeants, patrol officers, highway, the mixed unit police chief, fire chief, town administrator. Then all the unions at Silver Lake Regional and the Halifax Elementary School as discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town.
I would make that motion. Did Sue have anything she wanted to add to the COVID?
Well, I'm just, I mean, I don't, I still don't know what to do about my specific situation. I've asked my drivers to come back next week. Because we are considered essential and we're providing essential services and I need to get back to. Let, you know, taking more people on trips and things like that. And, you know, my, I haven't asked my drivers to come. For the past couple of months, me and the other staff have been taking care of it, but it's getting to the point where I can't do both. Um, so, I mean, I don't know that that needs a vote because they were always essential. I'm I'm just not sure. I just want you to know that. I have asked them to come back and I haven't given them a specific date, but um I'm hoping that they can come back next week.
Well, just as long as you inform them that they take all precautions as far as the mask and the whole gloves or whatever.
Right, and we're, you know. Scott is working on that. I just, I feel like there needs to be townwide precautions that. Are the same for every department, although every department is different, the basis of it should be for all of us. So. If, you know, the library is requiring something, I should be requiring the same thing. It's not like you're gonna be having different things in different places. For employees and for the residents. Um, you know. My issue is I'm gonna ask the drivers to come back. Some of them want to, some of them don't. Um, they're not gonna have the same amount of hours they usually have because they're not gonna be as busy. So, you know, do I continue to pay them? What, you know, it's, there's a lot to it. And I just don't know how to handle it, so.
I think those are issues we can take up at the department heads meeting too, and we should have that sooner rather than later.
Well, that's my thing. I can't wait another two weeks for another selectman meeting.
Well, I think the board indicated to me there was the, their plan was to have that department head meeting next week. And I'll try and make sure that it's earlier in the week rather than later in the week.
Thank you.
The um. The decision is up to you whether or not they are required to come back to work though, I I believe, as long as you have.
Work for them.
Believe so, yeah. That's what we had, we had said. It was up to you to allow them to work from home or not and. If you have work for them to do to drive people to appointments, it shouldn't be up to you to drive them to appointments if we have drivers.
Then we have to determine what we're gonna do if somebody doesn't want to do that.
Right.
Deal with that.
So in in that case, Tom, if they, if we have work for somebody and they don't want to work. Do we, we tell them that they need to take vacation time? Cause that's for personal time, because that's what we had talked about previously.
Exactly, that that's what I'm getting at. We need to make sure that that policy is clear and concise and across the board.
But they don't have that. They don't have benefits. They're part time employees.
They work fewer than twenty hours a week on a regular basis, so. Oh, okay. So it's basically that they're, you know, we've been paying, I mean, Susan's been paying them at the number of hours they normally would be working every week. Because we hasn't sent people home and now she's ready to have them come back. And so let's see, if they're not willing at this point to come back. The board's gonna have to make a decision um where they, there's work available. And we want you to come back. If they're not ready to come back, do we stop payment of along the lines of what we've been doing?
I think so.
I I.
I I I, because a person basically saying to you, I don't want to work anymore under those conditions. And if other people are willing to work on those conditions, if we just look for someone else. And and I don't want to be cold about it, you know, I understand the drivers and close contact with people are more susceptible, but at the same time. We have to run the town and if they're not willing to accept the job. As it is now, then we got a choice to make. We have a choice to make.
Yeah, the cold, hard fact is we can't pay them and pay someone else to do their job. Uh, we're just not gonna be set up to do that, so.
Double dip.
And then the other issue is, you know, so say someone normally gets, you know, I I know you don't want to talk about it now, but I'm just saying at ten, say they get ten hours a week. Normally, and now they're only gonna get five. You know what I mean? Like their pay is gonna be cut. And I mean, I get, is that just, it is what it is, or I don't know, just stuff we need to think about.
Well, what I think part of what I should do, Susan, is when I send the information out tomorrow. So is to get that list of questions from everybody that they would like to get answers from the board, just like you're asking right now.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was kind of getting at when I said we need to make sure what we're doing in house before we start opening doors. And to your point, Charlie, earlier in the week, next week would be good, so we can get this thing kind of, if not nailed down, at least. In progress.
I'm not available on Tuesday. Other than that, I should be available.
Maybe I'm gonna aim for Monday then. And Monday's good. Probably in the afternoon. So not to get jammed. Okay. Anybody else? One more good. A PM, have we, have we covered everything?
Yeah, you guys said you guys have both to go into executive session.
Right, okay.
Charlie's previous motion.
I'll second it.
Gordon?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Troy, yes. It would not become me back into public session.
There'll be no.
Thank you.
So. And to the board, I'll talk with you in a couple of minutes at the alternative uh meeting. Thank you.